The order. Members present, myself, I'm here, Dan Wireball, Bruce Pruka, Monica Sannick, Beth Pope, Andrew Shaw, Kevin Myers is absent. All right, I'm calling the, sorry, Central Point Regular Committee meeting to order by myself at six o'clock. And we have public participation, we have three, four sets of people to talk here. Laura McGinnis from Arcadis. And then we have Aaron Stride from the Crawford County Partnership, and then Scott Bennett from the United Bank, and then he'll be over to the public after that. So Laura McGinnis.
What is your payment address, please?
Name's Laura McGinnis.
Group one, okay.
And my address is 107 West Old Brook Ridge in Chesapeake. Well, outside of Chesapeake. And we want to hear, we have snow up there. So Jeff asked me to come back and give you guys an update on where the administrative order stands and what's coming in the next year. So I'll step back and let you know what has been happening. In September of 2015, you signed a agreement with US EPA that you would begin the journey on a seven-year plan for the administrative order. The journey included anything related to reducing combined sewer overflows into the St. Dusky River and the other, basically, anything that doesn't get to the treatment plan needs to be reduced. This all is part of the Clean Water Act, a requirement. The mayor asked me to give you guys even more information on what combined sewer overflow is, and how it relates to some of the separation projects that have been going on in Southern and that area. And basically, the goal right now, with all the construction on Southern Avenue, it has led to removing storm water from your waste water system. The goal of reducing how much storm water and waste water as a combined gets into the river. So this is just the first of three phases, and the work done there will reduce west entry and turn the river from the Buffalo Run sewer and some of the other CSO drainage systems. This is a multi-step process, it's not a complete, did the work on Southern, we're done. There's a lot more that needs to be done. So in this Phase One administrative order, some of the things that had to be done were making sure the signs were up at all the CSOs. CSO love it, and it's on the sign. We did pre-construction flow meter. So we, this is like a before and after situation. We put flow meters in the ground, we'll flow in the pipes in 2016, we're gonna do it again next year to see the observed benefit from all the work that's been done so far. The Buffalo Run was inspected, St. Dusky Interceptor was inspected, that all gives us the right spectrum. It's literally a Karen that went through the sewers to look at the condition that helps the city understand what defects are, where issues might prop up in general condition. There've been many improvement projects, the storm water detention basin up at Fairgrounds, all the work on Southern, Plumb Street through ODOT, and we're all leading to what comes next year, which is the flow metering to understand the benefits and look at what needs to be done next, which is the Phase Two analysis. So we will be metering hopefully in the spring, we'll get some good rains and dry weather, look at how the system now responds. The improvements that have been made, we should see a reduction in overflows to the river, we should see a reduction in people calling in basement complaints in that area, and we want to hear there have been. And we'll take that information, look at it in a computer model to figure out where to best spend our money and how to negotiate with US EPA and what projects we got to next. Because this is only Phase One, it shouldn't be multiple phases, it's mapped out as three phases. But the negotiating that happened with US EPA was actually very favorable compared to if you'd done it some utilities several years prior, and they got a 25-year plan. You guys have a seven-year plan or a chance to step back, reevaluate and decide where to best focus your efforts and your money, which other communities don't have, so it's a plus. And that's what we're gonna be doing in the next calendar year, is reassessing what were the benefits and now where do we need to next to continue meeting the requirements of the Clean Water Act. Address Jeff, you miss anything?
Uh, no, I, I, I think, you know, the bad thing is, everything we're doing is underground, and you really don't see the benefit of it perceived-wise, but it's a slow process, but as we put together our GIS mapping for numerous items that we can now access on a laptop, we do have more than the city separately than I think we thought. But we still got a ways to go with the integral part, the infrastructure, in the middle of the city that's tied into the Buffalo. That, that's gonna take the time and unfortunately money to, that's gonna be a complicated process, and that's not gonna happen overnight.
And the goal of this Phase One was the Southern area that drains through Buffalo Run. The initial way we mapped out the phases would be moving up to the Woodlawn area to get the areas that are typically coming north to Buffalo Run, and then the third phase would be Oakwood, more of the central area contributing to Buffalo Run, because that is by far your biggest offender. And in doing that, it will benefit the other CSOs, and they're closer to compliance. That's where we negotiate, and that's why we do these studies, to make sure we're doing the right things now, because. But Phase, Phase Two, the way it was written in your middle, the initial administrative order should be a five-year phase that would start, we owe them a Phase Two plan by the end of 2020. I just, that took some time, time to negotiate, they didn't take time to respond, they've been slower lately. I anticipate we'd be starting the Phase Two projects probably in 2022. We have some time there, or maybe we won't have as many growth time. But Southern looks really nice, I took a drive down there today, and that's what you can see from the whole project, it's got nice and roads and everything, but that's a five-year plan, we anticipate it'll be more sewer separation projects, because that's the most economically feasible alternatives rather than an additional treatment plan for huge tanks that have to be maintained and cleaned and have someone stacking them to, sewer separation. As much as it is very disruptive to the community, ultimately is typically the most cost-effective, especially for the leaders.
Laura? We're ready to have another report go to the EPA in February, right? Twice a year we have to submit information and where we're, where we're at, and Arcadis makes good effort, so.
And today, they, they have not responded. And we submitted on time, I called to check in with them, which is a good thing. It means either too busy and they're not paying attention to you, or they're happy you're showing progress, you're on schedule, there's no reason to pause a wire hat, so. So that's, this year we'll be busy not on the construction side, but on the planning side, so I'll be working closely with Jeff, and with Brandon too, to make sure we understand the system, get all the updates in, and figure out the best path.
I have a question for you.
Yes?
You said the data will be used on flow rate and everything. How are you gonna be able to determine that depending on the weather? Are you got, you have statistics on how to, if we have a dry spring or exceptionally wet spring, do you have ways to adjust for that, or?
We do, and the good news is, this will be our third effort flow metering in your city. We did it in 2009, we have data, with pre-construction in 2016, whatever we get for next year. There's also ways to, we calibrate the monitoring data, but if we notice it's an especially dry year, we can move forward saying, okay, that was a dry year, we'll adjust some parameters to make it better represent a wet condition, it's better than a dry year. Everything is built off, since you're a combined sewer community, everything is built off what happens in a typical year. And we have developed a typical year rainfall, looking at the last 60 years, we have data, and that's how EPA gauges everything. If you were a sanitaryous community, you'd look at a big long, a big rainstorm, one of it. You look at how many times will Buffalo Run overflow in a typical year? And that's kind of very natural, because that volume come down and the activation come down, and that's what we'll see later.
A question, I guess maybe more for Jeff than for you. They're working right now out there on Southern and on Highland and that area. Now, is that, when that area is complete, are we done for the winter, or is there going to be further construction taking place in that area of town over the winter?
Uh, no, we're actually booked all the way to March in that area.
Okay.
They have Group One, which is Hopley, Cullen, and Weststone and Southern in that intersection, that's why we didn't pave Weststone that part this year, because we're gonna tear it up here in about two, three weeks. And then right when they're done with that project, we're gonna go to Group Three A, which is Washington Jones and that whole V section right there, between Hopley and Southern and Washington. So that, that will complete the phase, and hopefully we're done by spring. That way we can do the flow monitor.
So people in that area know that they're still expecting some disruptions, and it's gonna impact traffic too, of course, as it always does.
Let's outline the run down Weststone and tie into that new culvert and everything that runs out to St. Dusky, or?
No. You mean the one that runs down to Mansfield Street?
Yeah, that's what I meant, sorry.
Yeah. And the reason that we put that additional storm drain in is because that starts draining right around Southern on Weststone and goes north. Well, by the time it got down to the subdivision on the other side of the tracks, it was full.
Yeah.
And there was no place for that water to go. So that's why we added that additional storm drain, which we'll get credit for that.
I know the people, I talked to some people that live back here in that subdivision, Auto and all that down there, and they're very thrilled with that, because it'll help to alleviate some of their backyards from flooding and everything like that too, so they're thrilled.
Just a little piece at a time.
Yep.
And then we can start eliminating. Laura, some of the others, oh, I'm sorry, some of the other cities that have, that have got the 25-year, what kind of rate increases have you seen in those cities imposed?
I don't have the answer, but I can give that for you.
That would be helpful.
I just had a follow-up question to your remark about our two times a year report that we sent to the EPA, we haven't received any follow-up on that, how long is that thing going on?
We started that, the order was signed in September of 2015, the first one went in February of 2016, we got it February 6th, not June.
But as far as the response to the report, there really hasn't been?
They've knowledgeably received it, but they have no questions on the information.
I guess I have some concerns about that, just from a standpoint of we're complying, but we're not really getting a report to kind of detail whether they're satisfied with our progress, with these projects or not. And I, you know, kind of my compliance hat comes out, and I say if we're complying, we are kind of, well, not kind of, we are owed a response to know if we're satisfying the requirements being put on us by this outside organization, so, outside of the city that is. But, so I guess, is it typical that you're seeing that in other communities as well?
I think US EPA's stretch pretty thin.
Right.
As long as you're not raising a red flag, they're gonna work well. Like, I can certainly reach out.
I guess I don't, I guess I'm not saying we need to raise a red flag, I just would like to know that we're?
I mean, the data you're sending isn't raising red flags there.
Sure, yeah, I guess I just would like to know that we're in good standing and that they're satisfied with the progress.
I would try to ask them to.
Sometimes you don't wanna jerk on the line.
Sometimes you don't wanna know, but I don't think we're in a position where we want to blindly move forward thinking we're good and everything's, you know, heading in the right direction.
Oh, in the past, it's not that problem.
And then we get something else that we're all of a sudden not happy with what we find out, and so.
But we're doing what has been offered, but I think now is a good time, as we're starting to look at what is Phase Two been involved, start building that discussion with them. Because that's, I think, why we had such a successful negotiation once it started happening, because it took six, seven years to get an agreement, not, not on your end, just focus and reply, it would take two or three years.
Sure.
It doesn't change, the neighbors have changed. I think now's a good time to get that dialogue.
I would agree, I think, just to keep them aware that it's important to us and we want it moving in the right direction, and we want a good, a good negotiated result. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
Thank you, Laura. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Laura. Aaron Stein, Crawford County Partnership.
Good evening, hi, Aaron Stein, 107222, East Ohio. You good?
You're good.
Okay, good evening, thank you guys so much for allowing me to be here tonight, I do have a handout, if I could. So tonight I'm here to talk about a really exciting initiative through AEP that the partnership has worked with and applied for a grant through AEP to install electric vehicle charging station in a city-owned parking lot. So we've been working for the last few months with AEP, and we have secured $94,000 grant dollars to provide us with installation of a ChargePoint 250 electric vehicle charging station. So, to kind of walk you through that a little bit, AEP has a program, like I mentioned, that will allow for charging stations to be in their service region around the state here in about the next five years. As you can see from the handout I gave you, about 25% of all vehicles will sold in our country and in our state will be electric. So this gives us the opportunity as a city to have a electric vehicle charging station installed at no cost to the city. This is going to allow us to put the infrastructure in place, so that as we move into the future in the next five to 10 years, which all of the data is telling us, is going to include a lot of electric vehicles, we'll be prepared to, to have the capability to welcome not only the people from our own community to charge the vehicles, but those coming, hopefully to our beautiful downtown, to see our murals, to see our parks, to shop, to get coffee, to get pizza, whatever it might be. So this is a really exciting initiative through AEP that we were lucky enough to, to tap into. As far as I understand, through our contact to AEP, we're the only one along our stretch of Route 30 that has, that took advantage of this program. So as you can see, in the last few months, we've been working with a company called ED United that distributes the charging stations, and in conjunction with them, we applied for the grant, we received the grant, and AEP has been on site. So for clarification, this is in City Lot Six, so this is in between Picking Park and the Greater American Crossroads mural, right there, kind of in the center of town, and has, has assessed it and deemed it acceptable and applicable for this grant and for the ability to install a charging station. So the station that would be installed would be a fast charger, so roughly about half an hour for someone to charge their vehicle. As you can see in the data that we provided, it would charge any car, so Tesla, all the way to whatever model's coming out. I know Ford is about to release their F-150 truck, a lot of fleet vehicles are now becoming electric. We listed quite a few different manufacturers that are all moving to electric vehicle lines. And so there's also an app that people can use to locate these charging stations. So really today, I'm here to talk to city council about a few things. So if you looked on your last page, really what I'm here to ask is for the ability to erect an additional hole, additional utility hole in Picking Park, right beside the one that already exists in the park, as well as install a fast charger in the spot, in a spot facing Picking Park, with the, the charging station going into the grassy area, right, that bumps right up along the parking lot. So that's number one. Number two, AEP will be reimbursing the partnership, the partnership will front the, the money for the grant to kind of initiate the installation of the, of the project and of the charger, and we would just ask that the city then reimburse the partnership for those funds as AEP will be cutting the charge to the city of U.Syrus. And then finally, for allowing us to allocate one parking spot in City Lot Six to be exclusively used for electric vehicle charging. So hopefully, I didn't go too much too fast there, but I wanted to make sure that I was efficient with the time that I was given tonight, and I would welcome any questions. We've worked with Mr. Ratliff on preparing an emergency ordinance, because these funds do need to be allocated by December 27th. So we need to make sure that we, we get on that, we've been pre-approved, like I said, for the $94,000, but we need to, we need to act quickly. So I'd welcome any questions.
Awesome. Being that it's tucked back in the middle of Picking Park, are we gonna have signage out around the square or something that's gonna let people kind of know it's back there that?
Absolutely, absolutely. I also have my IAN ODOT, and I'm hoping that we can potentially get something, maybe off of Route 30 as well, to really drive people to downtown to find a spot. Also with the app, the people that have electric vehicles and download the app, they're made aware of the closest charging spots.
Gonna GPS them right to it, basically?
Absolutely, and they can actually queue in line. If the station's being used, they can do the next one in line, and they can, they can come and use the spot, so.
Were any of the other city parking lots considered?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm just looking at, this is an extremely packed parking lot that's highly utilized, and I have a feeling the charging station could sit unutilized the large part of the time, there's a lot of businesses around that area, Angles and Coffee Shop and so forth, they get a lot of retail traffic in there.
Sure.
And the parking's at a premium for them, just wondering if there's any other sites that were identified.
Sure, absolutely. So we actually looked at all the city-owned parking lots, along with AEP when we did our feasibility study, we looked at actually the parking lot here, we looked up at the courthouse, and because of the, the things that they would have to do in all the parking lots in order to stay within that $94,000, the City Lot Six was the most feasible within the grant dollars that we were allocated. So I definitely understand, I definitely understand your concern, as someone that parks in that lot every day, it's a good work. It's definitely, it definitely may be a challenge, but this City Lot Six was the most feasible of all the lots that we, that we looked at. I believe here at the, at City Hall, the only spot that we could maybe consider would have been on this side of the building in the far back where the police, the policeman park, and even at that, there would have to have been quite a, quite a bit of construction to erect a new pole back there and whatnot. So like I said, in Picking Park, it's kind of perfect, because we can erect a pole right beside the pole that's already there, it wouldn't disturb much. So really, it's, it's gonna be the use of that one parking spot.
Then the, this apparatus you're showing here, this ChargePoint?
Yes.
Is that about the same size as the gas pump?
Uh, it's, it's, I would say it's about half that size.
Half that size?
And a really cool feature is that we're able to brand this, so we'll be able to brand it with the City of U.Syrus's logo, we can pick whatever color we'd like for it. On the screen there, we can put information about upcoming events, we can do all sorts of things to customize and personalize it to the City of U.Syrus.
So this is run off of credit cards then, or?
Yes, oh, through the app. Do you have the app? Be there aware.
Okay. So anyone without the, without the app can use the app?
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
Yeah, okay. So you paint this spot purple and whatever, I pull in there, wanna park here all day, what happens then? Because that whole parking lot's full all day long, it's only supposed to be two out of parking, that's, that's very force, so, so what do you do then?
Whatever you want to do. You get passing ordinance, criminalizing it, you get fines and things.
I'm just saying, if I'm driving from Cleveland to Toledo or whatever, and I see there's a charging station, I pull in there, and there's an old 68 pickup truck parked in there, what do you do then?
You can't, you can pass an ordinance, it's like a handicap spot where you can enforce it, fines, tow it, all those things are liable to you.
I think we also want our phone number, the city's phone number on it somewhere, so that if, if that does occur, they can call immediately down here and we can do something about it.
I'm just, just throw that out there.
You stated that there's a request for one dedicated parking slot for the charging station, I assume then the charging station will only be capable of charging one vehicle?
Yes, sir, yep, just one part. And like I said, we're trying to begin with the end in mind, we're trying to think of to the future, so with the addition of the utility pool that we put there, in, in five years and 10 years, if we would want to make half the lot electric because of the need, we're able to do that now. So that's why, instead of applying for a grant for multiple, multiple stations, I just chose one, just so that we were able to kind of plant that seed and prepare for what might come down the pipe in the future.
Yeah, I got another, do we get any kickback or anything off of this?
Sure, so.
Can we get anything off of this to help fix that big pothole in that?
I'd love to fix that big pothole in that parking lot. But, so it would require an additional line of service, and so the partnership would take on that monthly fee for additional utilities, and our intent is to, to, to set the rate of the charging station so that we could recoup the, the money, the kilowatts that would be used, as well as, there's a, there's a hook-on fee typically for electric vehicles, and then in the state of Ohio, you can't charge by the kilowatt, you have to charge by the minute, and so we would charge in 10 to 15-minute blocks, and as always, the partnership's happy to share those financials with the city. Our intent isn't to make money, it's simply to offer a service, so.
I was just gonna say, it looks like the company's gonna stay on the installs it to help with maintenance and everything, I guess what's the turnaround time, it said, said you should fail or miss malfunction or something, what's the turnaround time to get there?
Within, within a two-hour, I would say max, they're out of Columbus, so they're, they're ready at 24/7 to help with that. So, and like I said, with us being able to set the rates, we can, you know, we can make sure that during the Robert's festival, maybe, you know, it's complimentary so that we're encouraging people to come, or, you know, there's, there's just a lot we can do with it, you know, I don't, I don't foresee us making tons and tons of money off this one charging station, but like I said, essentially, we were thinking to the future, and we were thinking how great it would be if we could utilize some of these grant dollars in U.Syrus, because they weren't being, they weren't being touched otherwise. And to our, to my research, we located online, it noted that there were three charging stations in our county. There's one in Galleon at an apartment complex that we had a really hard time locating, there's one at the Hopley Inn here in town, but it's in a shed and behind the building, and then the Holiday Inn was actually listed as a third, and we couldn't find it, the manager and staff, none of us could find it. So that kind of told us, all right, I think we could probably provide something for our community and visitors in town, if they would like to charge their vehicle, they could do so, and, and look at our murals and our park and grab a cup of coffee.
I've seen them park in your office, it seems like more and more often now.
Absolutely, our contacts with ED United have shared with us, for example, the city of Cincinnati has said that they've mandated now that 5% of all their city parking lots have to be ED friendly, so it's coming. And so we were just hoping to get out in front of it in a way that doesn't cost us anything to get started, so.
Thank you.
Okay, that discussion will come up then in, we have the Health and Safety Committee meeting this evening.
Okay, is there anything else you might need from me?
I don't believe so.
No, no, forget it, we'll get all the ordinance, forget it.
Okay.
I'll be for Tuesday.
Thank you guys so much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. For taking the initiative to do that. And Scott Bennett from United Bank.
Hi Scott, United Bank, I live at 354 Leighton's Road, Mary, Ohio. And what you have in front of you is a proposal for financing, we'd be more than willing to participate in, I put it in a format that you can use in comparing, Duist asked me for five, seven, and 10-year financing and a amortization on an annual, on a semi-annual basis. You can see the rates and the three amortization levels there. You can see the rates and the three amortization levels there. And you can see how those payments come out and then the total interest that is being paid throughout the life of the loan is out there to your far right. You might be willing to answer any questions that you might have.
So this is for the fire truck that we've been, we've been looking in and we passed legislation for to, to hold for a two week period, but that we need to get legislation done because we have to get everything rounded up. And it's, I think it's very nice that a local bank has come forward and said, hey, you know, why not keep the interest in our community rather than sending it somewhere else? So I'm sure that we'll gladly take a look at this and see how it fits into the other things we've received. This doesn't have any impact on us getting this through state purchasing where we finance it, does it? Okay, so it's still a state purchased item and all those things are still in place, it's just the financing then.
We've enjoyed a longstanding relationship with the city on the deposit side. We'll make sure that you are aware that we will make loans as well, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nobody else, somebody else like this could. Otherwise we'll proceed. Okay, Order of Committee Business, we have a plating order at 6:31. First on the agenda is Highland and Baylor rezone request.
Do you mind me asking, do you need to review this?
Please do.
I'm Landon Hill, I'm in Zoning Administration for the City of Uciirus. We've talked about this, we had it originally in Plating Committee, we then had a public hearing, but we have had it pushed back, so I'll just give a kind of brief overview of exactly what we're talking about. We're in the Highland and Baylor, on Highland and Baylor, along East Southern Avenue there is the area of the request. Mr. Kennedy is requesting a change for four parcels to be rezoned from the R3 residential zoning district to the limited industrial commercial district in order to accommodate his landscaping company. Think you had there the, the presentation that we went through the last time that kind of shows what the current zoning in the area is and how it would be changed if the proposed changes were approved. The, the use that Mr. Kennedy is proposing fits in the LIC district as a permitted use under the warehousing and distribution category. So some particular development standards that would be, need to be considered in this case. Typically in the limited industrial commercial zoning district, there is a 200 foot setback for any structure, service area, or parking area if that area plus to a residential zoning district. However, in this case, there is a provision in the code that allows for, in more of the older developed areas of the city where existing flats within one block of the, of the property are fewer than 75 feet on average, and there are industrial or business uses in proximity, it would allow for those setbacks to go away and those setbacks then become those of the abutting residential zoning district. So in this case, it would meet the restrictions for that provision. And the setbacks would be 20 feet from the front yard, four feet from the side yard, and 20 feet from the rear yard. Another consideration for the development standards would be in relation to exterior development. Mr. Kennedy would likely be storing mulch, rock, you know, whatever he would need for his landscaping company. And in order to do so, he would have to have a screening plan that was approved by Planning Commission in order to allow him to do so, which typically, you know, it can mean a privacy fence, it can mean a fence with steel slatting in it, it can mean natural vegetation, yes. With the end game being to block view of any exterior storage of those types of materials. So that's just the, the overview. I think we've had some additional correspondence on it since the public hearing, and I think, I don't know, maybe Todd?
They're in your packet. There's a petition that Dan Kennedy circulated and there are a number of letters that he got as well, and they're addressed to council. And those are all in your packet.
I think what most of them are looking for is they're looking for a good neighbor and that, to fit in there. And the proposal, glad you went back out and talked to a lot more of the neighbors and got the petition and we heard from a lot more people in that area, I believe.
Dane, do you have anything you wanna?
If anybody has any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
Do you have any?
Bruce has.
I just got, the people that assigned this, that were favorable, are most of them actually live there or are they landlords that own the property?
They live around the area.
Do they?
Yeah.
Okay. I was saying, is that, personally for me, that carries a lot of weight. I mean, if they're a landlord and they don't live there, I'm pretty much not in favor of it that way. But if they, if they actually do live there, then that's, yeah, that's great.
Anybody else have a question? Dane, wasn't it, before you wanted, the guy used it for the same purpose, didn't there a mowing business there?
It was concrete.
But there was a business, huh?
Yeah, there was a business out there.
So was, I got another question.
Go ahead.
So is there, I guess what's, what's a little troubling to me is, is, is this gonna be like nine to five or is this gonna be around the clock?
That's not gonna be around the clock.
Okay.
I mean, we show up in the morning, about 7:00 early, we're out of there by 8:00. Maybe stop back once in the middle of the day to get something and usually out of there anywhere from 4:00 to 6:00.
And as far as the screening, that has to, what, if you, if you plant trees, they have to attain a certain height by?
Something around?
Yeah, I believe that standard is it has, if you go the natural vegetation route, it has to reach a minimum of seven feet in height within three years of planting the trees. Not like you didn't like that plant height anyways.
I just go full up fancy, I already know. Put it back there to let my injuries grow the way they should.
Anybody else?
So if we look at our schedule? That's like the second page in your packet for this item, I'm watching.
1213.
1213?
Right. So if there are no other questions, can entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion.
To accept the zoning change? Do I have a second?
Do you have a second?
All right, I have a first and second. Any other discussions before we vote? Any other questions? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. All right, Dane. We will get the legislation and it'll be approved of?
It'll be presented to council, the next council.
It'll be, yeah, it'll be brought up for approval at the next council.
The 19th.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing what you did and getting the signatures and the letters.
That works, that works well getting, showing us support. Next item, Tiffin Hill Street rezoning request. Planning Commission sends, we were talking about the property on this letter, I'll read that. October 2nd, 2019, addressed to City Council. In regards to items approved by the Planning Commission for City Council's review. Here, Madam President, the Uciirus City Planning Commission met on Monday, September 30th, 2019. It is requested that the following items approved by Planning Commission be submitted to the appropriate council committee for review. Item is proposed zoning reclassification of properties from suburban residential, which is R2, to neighborhood business. And the properties proposed for rezoning reclassification include 718 Tiffin Street and parcel IDs 08001811104 and 080018112000. See attached. And the attachment is showing the property at the corner of Tiffin and Hill, and it is to extend to the west along Hill Street, on the north side of Hill Street, back to the street that's, uh?
Seer.
Seer Street. Is that where it'll end? The change, okay, yes.
Basically.
And that'll connect, that'll actually connect to the other neighborhood business, correct?
It'll originate with that neighborhood business district on the corner. It will extend to what eventually is, is an R1 district on the west side.
Oh, sure. Yeah, Landon will, needs to back down a month.
Sure. Yeah, so as Mark was kinda explaining there, the, the area of the request is, is near the Tiffin and Hill Street intersection. The current neighborhood business district that we, that we would be expanding off of is the Evita Health Center there and the Dialysis Center on the corner. That is what is currently housed in the neighborhood business district. Like Mark said, we would, we would be expanding that neighborhood business district to the west on the north side of Hill Street until we get to Seer Street. The proposed change is actually a Tiffin Street address, 718 Tiffin Street, but like Doug said, it is that large field that is behind those two medical centers. It fronts on both Tiffin and Hill Street. Mr. Locke purchased it recently. He had it surveyed and split to this point so he could pursue a zoning change, the one we're talking about. You see the, the current zoning there and how it will be extended? That's basically just how I explained, but put on paper for you. Mr. Locke has indicated that the use he would like to see in the area would be that similar to those types of facilities, of more medical facilities or something along those lines. He can speak better to that than I can. But that would be a permitted use in the neighborhood business district. I've also included the entirety of the permitted uses there in the packet as well. But as you can see, that would fit under kind of the administrative business and professional offices uses in that district. You also have the development standards there, some that are of note, particularly for this change. We, as the, the rear yards of these properties would have let to what would still remain the R2 zoning district, so they would have a larger setback as they remain residential. In the neighborhood business district, you kind of have that building protection that increases the rear yard setback from 20 feet to 40 feet when you have let to a residential zoning district. It calls for any lighting fixtures to be arranged or shielded and directed so not to, to shine on adjacent residential properties. Landscaping, parking and services, service areas are encouraged to be landscaped, but much like we talked about with the exterior storage on, on Mr. Kennedy's, any side or rear yard that applies to a residential zoning district would be required to have some kind of screening in it at that point. And then trash and garbage control, all of their dumpsters or whatever would need to be enclosed to keep those from, from being. Mr. Locke will likely speak to his intentions for the property better than I can, so I would, I would like to turn it over to him unless you guys have any other questions for me.
Anybody have any question? Need your name and address.
My name is Kevin Locke. I'm the owner of Locke LLC, I'm in Ohio, chiropractic and acupuncture. I background is electrical engineer and also I'm a community organizer. I have two major vision about this land as our population getting more mature, we need to increase to support the health service. Right now I can see that they are being suffocated. Either they wanna go down to river get wet or they are pushing two locations they're demanding for. So since the lot is 8.6 acre, so I'm thinking about first, ten stone for one third, which goes to Hill Street and continue the land. This all depends on the demand and also the city approval for the future. If in the future, they want to have, develop, need more land upon our city, our city approval, and we can increase more demand if they put a center there for one more than 100 high-paid job, clean high-paid job, more city contacts. And second, refer to second mission that I have. So our job, unique job, good job, clean job, professional job. And as in the medical, health field, I can see that. Clinical office, health field is clean because on the Sunday, Saturday evening, nice landscape, clean, no noise. And also on the same token, the neighbor, the real estate value, I can say at least double, you know, put money in the neighbor's pockets. Win-win is good for the community and good for the neighbor. So I think this is a purpose besides I want to develop it. I want to set phase one is see how much demand, if they want more, then we can flexible as providing the service for bigger company, provide professional service. That's my vision about what the land can be used more productive for benefit of the community.
Yes. Sounds more than wonderful. Thank you. It's nice to hear that someone else has a vision for our community too, that comes in and can share and are willing to take these steps. That's certainly a wonderful thing for our community.
Thank you very much, Mr. Locke.
Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Locke?
Yeah, I do. I live up in that area, so.
We need your name and address, please.
Stand up and tell your name and address.
873 West Parody Street, Uciirus, Locke.
Again, your name?
Jane Ains.
Okay. Okay.
Is there gonna be, there, yeah, you button up against Garden Court, so is there gonna be a separation in between the people?
It won't be buttoned up there. There's only one third of those, one third of them will be channeled, two thirds still original zoning, so it's no, no, that's far distant there.
So we have a distance difference?
Oh, very, very, yeah, yeah. That may be more than 100, 500 feet maybe, far away, yeah.
I don't remember, yeah, I don't remember if he checked on press, but it's not all the way back.
Oh, okay, thank you.
A good neighbor could be somewhere that I'd live. I also have a lot of property. Good to take care of people you're around. It's about money, about how you take care of people around you is more very important.
If, if say for instance, along Mr. Me's questionnaire, he did extend more out closer to the Garden Court area, he would still be required for screening and setbacks, the same as on the budding signs, correct?
he would still be required for screening and setbacks, the same as on the budding signs, correct?
Right.
Okay, I just wanted to verify that and make sure that's correct, too.
And I think that's great, that's awesome, but there needs to be, if he does come back, there probably needs to be a barrier.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Back in our neighborhood area.
Okay.
Great job.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Anybody else have any questions?
Okay, on the second page, you see we're at step number four and five. Uh, we need a request for legislation, a draft legislation that will have the motion for 30 days and then also set a date for a public hearing. A date and time, uh, we're looking at probably, what did you say, December?
December 7th right now.
Yeah.
If it's, and it's the next week, like the 12th, the clock in November is on Tuesday, so it's a bit of a, bit of a tight.
Yeah.
But we do it the next week, which will be, say, December 16th. We have, we have meetings on Tuesday and Thursday at the 17th and 19th. But the 6th will be the, the possibility of that.
Oh, it's everybody, December 16th and December 18th.
I'd say December 16th would be better, that give us some days to, before the committee meeting. Give us a couple of days before committee meeting, uh...
Yeah. Is that workable?
Yeah, that's workable.
Okay, December 16th, you want to do it at 5 o'clock, what time?
Uh, 5.
Do it later.
Little bit later?
6 o'clock.
That'd be fine. Mr. Locke, look, that'd be acceptable for you.
On, on December the 16th. Okay, it was when the public hearing will be done, we'll publish all of that. Uh, we'll send the paperwork down to the Law Director's Office. We'll get the draft legislation, the draft legislation will be posted on the zoning, uh, door, doorway over there, land in somewhere in your area. Where else is that different place?
Does this, he also has to have a sign posted on that property?
Right, I'll send out notification letters to, uh, property owners within 200 feet of the, the area of the request. Uh, we'll post the public notice signs, I'll likely put up a few because it's such a, a large area there. Uh, I'll put up a few public notice signs that have the date and time and then...
Would you, would you possibly be able to put a public notice sign at the corner of Tiffin and, and the, uh, Abida's corner lot there? At, with an arrow showing where the prop...
I suspect I probably could, provided I...
You get permission?
I mean, we'd have to get permission, of course, but I'm saying, so could most people, not too many people drive that section of Tiffin Street, of Hill Street? I'm just saying, if we don't have...
Whatever anybody thinks is most appropriate to get the message out there to as many people as we can, we are willing to, to post it wherever is necessary.
You have a motion there?
I need a motion.
I approve that we're going to have this public hearing on this six, uh, December 16th.
Okay. And the draft legislation?
And draft legislation, okay.
Alright, uh, if there's no other discussions, all who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed, okay. Mr. Locke, we'll see...
Sixteen minutes.
We'll see you on the 16th, 6 o'clock?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Alright, uh, if there's nothing else for the committee, Bruce Martin, help me out. I will adjourn at 6:54.
Hold on a minute, I want to say something. I thought this meeting was at 7 o'clock, it didn't go to 6. I didn't pay any higher, I heard, I, I was just hoping you guys rezoned for Dean Kennedy on Faber Street back there. Okay, there was three other people besides myself that complained that didn't want that done. So, I don't understand how this is going to get slid through and... My point is, I don't want that mess behind my house, I don't have to listen to all the bobcats and the dump trucks. Ain't no seven acres on Parcher Road. He wants it in somebody's backyard, he can put it in his own backyard. So, I guess I'm gonna have to come to the next council meeting, right?
Yes, sir.
Alright, well, I'll be at that one, too.
Okay.
That's on...
The 7th, uh, the 19th, Tuesday at 7:00 PM. The regular meetings are on 7:00 PM on Tuesday, the committee meetings like tonight start at 6:00. But the next time this will be, uh, address will be on the 17th, it's on Friday, the 19th at 7:00 PM.
Alright. Hey, Tony, did you get, did you get a notice when the, when they had the public hearing?
He was here.
I was here.
Oh, were you here?
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't make it, so, okay.
Yeah, the lady, Patty Fetter was here last week, but there wasn't enough people here to have a, her last month or whenever it was, to have the meeting. So Patty didn't get to make hers, always her, and now she's sick, so...
Well, we'll welcome you on the 19th.
I'll be here.
Thank you.
Alright, there is nothing else for fighting, I will return at 6:56. And I will start health and safety at 6:56. AEP charging stations, number one. Well, I'll turn it over to you, Jeff. Do you have any more information than we do?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Other than what she presented, yeah, I don't, I don't have any, I would have a couple of questions, but then they all got answered. They, the electric bill, I was, I was worried about.
It seems like a pretty decent idea if you get one and then, I mean, that parking lot being small like that, I mean, you put a couple more back there and maybe that just becomes an EV lot in 10 years or something and you just have a bunch of electric parking spots back there. And then it wasn't, doesn't matter if one gets taken, you still got five or six others, you know? I mean, for the first couple of years, we're gonna have some struggles with parking, I can almost guarantee that that's gonna happen, but, I mean, I think it's a good idea, it's something that is happening more and more, I play, I told her, I see them all the time when I go to bigger cities, they're even now in the parking garages, so...
I know, I think it was probably about six years ago, when I was on the AEP, or the, um, EPA Education Foundation Board, that we had the first people come that were putting in these charging stations, you were thinking, is this really gonna happen? Well, it's, I mean, it's interesting now that they're saying in 2025, it wasn't it that they were expecting to have, uh, 25% of all vehicles sold needing, needing this for anybody that's going to be traveling, so, uh, I think this is, uh, really, it's, it's, uh, other than the parking space, that, and they have the money to do this, the money just comes through us, correct Joyce? And then we just, uh, give it to them for, uh, for this project to be done, so I think that it's sort of a win-win situation for the city.
Even says they're gonna make anything?
Well, you know, they had, she had some interesting points in here, she was talking about the number of vehicles, where did I see this in here? They go through Visaris on a day.
About four, yeah.
And, uh, and in the summer, we know that's more. Especially on Friday nights and Sunday afternoons, yeah, so, uh, the, uh... So we need, uh, an ordinance for that?
Yeah, well, you, you'll need a resolution, you'll need, you'll need a resolution to, uh, approve the installation of the pole, the charging station on, uh, the city lot 6. You'll need, uh, that to include, uh, if you want, uh, language that it's, uh, parking space that is exclusive for the, uh, electric charging station usage. You can, if you want, include fines and towing for that. Um, and then certainly, what you talk about, that's part of the finance appropriations. We need, and as part of this, we need to accept the funds from the grant and, uh, the reimbursement partnership for, uh, the installation. It could include in the appropriations later as well.
All that can go in one resolution?
The appropriation's gonna come in, in Joyce's appropriations later, but we'll, we'll acknowledge in this that we're receiving funds for purposes of the partnership included, uh, for, there'll be vertical for the installation. We approve the pole and charging station installation on, say, Lot 6, and, uh, we create an exclusive space for the use of the charging station. And we can talk about it in traffic committee in order, which is become health and safety, if you want to set up a, uh, different parking penalty like you have for handicap spots, for dedicated charging spots.
But which we need to do this because they were on a deadline?
Yeah, this, this first part of this.
We just made it, I get the resolution and then we go on and can discuss the parking and penalties and that.
Yeah, I, I meant to ask, I had a question, um, what, when they plan on starting construction, but the grant back for December, it's...
It has to be filed by the 27th, 7th of July.
Yeah, so the car may need spreading, so you're gonna put it on.
Anybody have any questions?
I guess I just am gonna bring up the same issue I brought up earlier, that, um, city lot 6 is a very heavily utilized area for the small businesses in that area, and we have other city parking lots. You know, there's a city parking lot behind the Crazy Fox and, and I don't really see how that's a difference.
It has to do with the location of the way the poles are right now.
Poles, okay.
That's, that's the issue, is the, is this the proximity of that pole that they can go right beside and, uh, and use? That's, that's why most of the other ones...
I mean, I realize that that's a consideration, but there's also the, I mean, you might have to spend a little bit of money to, to connect to a, a different pole, a different location, uh, but, well, I don't know, I think if we, I think if we, I think if some of the neighboring businesses in that area were aware of this, you know, an EV charging station doesn't help their business by and large for a lot of those people who are taxpayers and business owners, and, uh, the parking space does. So, I'm just, uh, I'm just thinking of them, uh, kind of ahead of the person who's driving through with their... Or, I mean, I'm sure there's some people in town that are gonna use this electric charging station, I think there's probably a few, but, uh, certainly. But I guess I'd just, uh, be curious to know, to be sure that more exploration was done of the other city lots.
As you said, that if they took the other city lots, though, that the funding wouldn't, we didn't get approved for enough funding to do it in the other lots, that was the other problem.
Yeah.
So they only gave them, they only gave $94,000 for the grant, and that's only enough to put it in city lot 6. There's not enough to put it in any other city lot because of the proximity of the poles, we have not money to cost more to do, so, so if we can't do it in city lot 6, we're not gonna be able to do it all.
Sure.
So, that's...
Well, but there's a precedent there that, you know, the business owners in the area have been using that as a parking space for their customers and we're gonna be taking that away from them, so, you know, that's taking...
I agree with Andy, and I, but I look at it from the standpoint, we've been allowing businesses to put dumpsters in parking spots and take parking spots from customers for years too, and we've never done anything about that, so, I mean, I understand, I get what you're saying, 'cause I use that lot a lot myself when I go uptown, but, I mean...
How soon do we need to know, like, move ahead with this? I mean, is it something that, the grant is time-sensitive and we have to have an answer by a certain date for it?
She has to have it by the 20th, we approve it by, before the 27th, where she can submit it.
Okay.
I mean, we don't have to decide on it.
Yeah.
Today, as long as we get the resolution, that'll do, correct?
They, they need to have the paperwork in by December 27th.
What I'm saying, but if we got time, we can discuss it and we can call a special committee, uh, council meeting right after we do one of that. Get on that a little bit more...
Just a, and just a thought here and, you know...
Well, we can touch base with the, some of the businesses right down there in that immediate area.
Yeah, I mean, they, they perceive it as a great thing for the business, and I'm...
I don't know, has anyone moved into that one, the Miller?
There is going to be, yeah.
There's gonna be someone living there, okay, and then around the corner. We can, uh, touch base with them, I'll make sure that I do that.
I'm just, I just know that that's an extremely busy lot already and, um, so...
I guess the times I've been down there, I've never seen it full.
It's usually about 9:00 AM, 9:11 is...
I drive by it daily, so, I know, it's, it's packed. So, I mean, I, I can tell you, regarding by, it's hard to find a spot in there, oftentimes.
Bill had a question.
I, I just wanted to say, if I was a person driving through town with an electric vehicle and he stops to order for a charge, I would not want to stop in the parking lot behind the Crazy Fox, so then charge my vehicle, I'm sorry.
I wasn't suggesting that, but yes, I agree with us.
Well, we had mentioned that.
We, we do have another parking lot that's behind Legion, which would be, and the family video, there is a parking lot there that a pole could be put in there, 'cause there is a area in between the parking that could accommodate a pole.
Well, we can look at it from the standpoint, if it's somebody that's from out of town and they're pulling in there and charging, and alls they have to do is go right around the corner, they can do some shopping for clothes, they can go into the Pelican and get some, get a coffee or something, they can go in and have a, have access to any of the businesses downtown, too. So, it, uh, you know, it's how you want to define your customers, you're, you're making an area that, you know, that, that encourages probably somebody that would never stop in town to stop in town, especially with that late traffic.
Yeah, I just wanted to tell Andy, I sit across from that parking lot many days and there's not a lot of in and out. It's just in and it's people who work around there that really park there. So if, if they're, apparently they're not worrying about their customers, uh, having a place to park because, no, the businesses, the business owners park there, so...
You know, I remember when my dad was a businessman downtown, and that was one of the issues, is where do your employees park? That you leave parking for your customers and, uh, you know, that, uh, it's, it's amazing, that was back in 1932, so... But it's been around for a few years, this whole issue of parking.
Well, I can remember my father, manager of the Newbury Store, he did not park downtown. He parked on Rent Salir Street down by Salvation Army and walked into work so that there would be parking for his customers.
Bruce, yeah.
I'm, uh, what I would like to know is, who are we going to consult for costs on these other lots?
AEP. AEP, they obviously took a look at them, I'm sure they have the paperwork on it, we can call them.
But I mean, are they going to, doing, do it for us or are we gonna...
Why wouldn't?
Well, I don't know, I mean...
Uh, they've already done it.
Okay.
According to Aaron, we can get ahold of, uh...
Yeah, it sounds like this round, you know, for this particular, they identified Lot 6 as...
Yeah, identified Lot 6 as the best, so, I, yeah, we can go to her and get the information now, gladly, we'll gladly do that.
At least on the side of... Yeah. He's glad, too.
I just, my comment is kind of like what Dan's got, is, you know, okay, we're gonna give up that parking spot. I think it promotes businesses, people to come to our town, and they're coming into the central part of the town. They're taking advantage of the service that we're offering them. And, uh, you know, actually, if we were worried about giving up one parking spot, we would probably do a better job of policing that lot for the people to park there all day long and, uh, you know, enforce that two-hour party. That way you have a turnover, if you're actually worried about having people shop, then a natural progression is to start policing that every two hours. That's my opinion.
Yeah, well, and if you go, if you go into this, maybe check with Aaron, why could, is, did they look at all the street parking? You know, maybe on the square, one of those, you know, even if that thing up...
No, the poles, it comes down to the poles, the power poles.
There's no power poles back there?
I don't believe so, I think they're, I don't think they're in the square, they're in the alleys, all that is, all that has been moved back, you know? So we'll get that information from Aaron and put this item on hold. If that's what you want?
I think it's a good idea, I just think, yeah.
I agree, I think we need to investigate possibilities of movement to the lot possibly behind the Legion or somewhere else, 'cause I think that lot doesn't give us full. Do you see that, Andy, I, I'm not down there during the Christmas hour on that one.
During the day, on a weekday, somewhat, yes, somewhat.
But it's not clear full, is it?
I mean, here again, you're, you, on, on, on a regular average day, you're gonna have maybe one spot, two spots open. But I don't know if those are gonna be your spots that are gonna be close enough to your pole. And I know that some of those business owners in that block, too, those are their designated spaces in the backside there, too, for the Legion people that work at Legion, one lady's got the business on the alley right there. for the Legion people that work at the Legion, one lady's got the business on the alley right there, and the Family Video people, I think they even somewhat use that too if they can, 'cause they want to be their customers to park. You're you're gonna run into this problem everywhere, 'cause we have a parking.
Well, me and Tony, I have a block away from from this down the alley.
Yeah.
Uh, so if if, uh, for people that want to park, it used to be they had to park outside of Walnut Street and outside of, uh, Spring Street, you know, or.
Opera Street, probably.
Stay away from, just stay away, so, yeah, we'll gladly take and get that information.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, we'll move on to the next. Uh, codified ordinance thirty oh three point oh eight impounding of vehicles. Mr. Adams.
Yeah, this is something that we've, uh, uh, we've sort of worried, talking about several, on several occasions, which kind of get around to getting it through the committee. Um, from time to time, the police will encounter a vehicle, um, oftentimes, they will, um, have it taken out by a third party and stored at off-site location, all those third parties charge a daily impound fee. The city, however, does not have anything in our ordinance in our three oh three point oh eight for the, uh, impounding of vehicles in our impound lot back here behind us. So we've talked about is just adding a section, um, to, uh, three oh three point oh eight that the fees that we charge for impounding vehicles would be at twenty dollars per day, uh, for each twenty-four, for the twenty-four hour period portion thereof. Um, as you see in Section B, um, individuals can redeem the the impounded vehicle, they're responsible for proof of ownership and the cost of towing, things like that, that they're not responsible for, uh, the impound fees, and that's just something that we would, we would add to, to that section.
To Section B?
Yeah.
B as in boy, or D as in dog?
B as in boy, I put it as a D.
One, both B and C.
Yeah.
I also noticed you highlighted three oh three point.
That's something you do on private property, we don't need to, uh, uh, impact that.
So you're talking three oh three oh eight, point oh eight.
Section B to add, which would be Section B one?
So Section B, you would add in here the language that, uh, T's for in recovery, the T for impounding, twenty dollars per day, the portion thereof.
Do we have that location as part of that?
No, it'd be the city impound, there, if any vehicles at the city impound, it's gonna go there, we won't have.
I was saying, 'cause we used to put stuff out there on Isaacville Road, and use that area as well.
They could, I mean, they could.
We'd we'd actually use, uh, develop this one, we have impound stuff.
Yeah, I mean, like, if someone puts something out, the street garage is oversized or something like that, they can do it. But any vehicle that the city has impounded is just gonna incur that fee.
Okay, so, uh, you'll put some legislation together then that, uh, would show what that would go, and we'll bring it back to committee then, is that okay? So you can see what it's gonna be, okay?
Andrew. State firearms legislation, back to you again.
Yeah, this one is, uh, th- this is somewhat problematic, but the state has changed the firearm law and, uh, at the state level. Highlights of that law are that, um, they have indicated that the state law preempts any, any local regulation of firearm possession, distribution, anything like that. Uh, it's further complicated, they, uh, included a provision that says, um, any person or group, entity adversely affected by any manner of ordinance, rule, regulation, resolution, practice, or other action enacted or enforced by political subdivision, i.e. the city, in conflict with, in conflict with this bill to bring a civil action against the political subdivision seeking damages, declaratory relief, injunctive relief, and compensation of those things. So if you have an ordinance on your book that prohibits somebody from possessing a firearm or using a firearm in certain situations, um, you can be sued for that. Uh, particularly troublesome in, uh, state law is the phrase, of of all the things that it preempts, is, among them is all legitimate uses of constitutional protected firearms, including hunting and sporting activities. So we have prohibitions against hunting inside city limits and discharging firearms inside city limits, uh, according to most pundits. Um, we're not allowed to do that anymore, you are allowed to.
So walk out the front door and shoot one off in the air, everyone.
Okay, can I stop the discussion for just a moment, and we can, so they can take a short recess?
Sure.
Okay, we'll take a recess for just a few minutes, is that right, Greg? He has to reset something, okay? Recorder's off, please. Yeah, back at seven twenty. Okay, ready, here, okay, so we'll, back for recess.
You have authority.
Well, it, you know, it it's unsubtle, I mean, it's a, it's a new law, um, there are, Cleveland, cities of Cleveland and Columbus are suing on their rights. The city ordinances that we have that are, I believe, directly impacted by it are, um, five forty nine oh one, which prohibits the discharging of the firearm inside city limits. Um, we have, uh, Section five oh nine, which is, um.
We don't have that, huh?
Uh, okay. Um, five oh nine oh seven, which is, um, emergency powers of the mayor in case of riot, or, or, or excellence, or whatever, uh, that allows the mayor, by executive order, to suspend certain rules on, uh, selling of firearms. And then, um, oh, then our, our, our hunting ordinance, um, we prohibit hunting in the city in certain, certain times and areas. So those are, those are three things that, you know, are directly impacted by it. Um, City Galleon, uh, is undergoing right now, they're redoing all their, all their laws, uh, through moving a lot of this stuff. Um, some people are very fearful because of the, uh, authority to sue. I don't know, uh, it's being challenged to court, it's obviously a whole rule issue, it's something you're due to do. Um, you know, what do we wanna do, I don't know. Um, if we don't remove those, those items from our code, do we run the risk of having lawsuits?
Yeah.
Possibly, um, there'll always be those, um, you know, national attorney groups that, you know, like any public records and some other things that just, you know, cover around, ADA stuff, just pop that a lot, cover around, and sue people.
I gotta ask a question.
Mm-hmm.
Um, seeing since we are seeing, it seems to be a lot more deer in the city limits. What do we do, one hundred sites, you gonna shoot one in the backyard or on Spring Street?
Okay. There are provisions in the, uh, state code about where it is appropriate to hunt, when it is appropriate to shoot, and how you can shoot, and, and things like that. Um, you know, you can't shoot at somebody's house, you can't shoot in a car, you can't shoot across a road, you can't shoot in somebody's cemetery.
It's, it's, that's true, that is actually a hunting law.
Did I say somebody might die?
Yeah, um, but, um, so there are still those things under state, state code, um, but, yeah, you know, I, you know, it.
Does this affect the city?
But if, you know, if you're in your backyard in the city lot and you don't go across the street, you're not within the, you know, school or a cemetery, or, or, you know, one of the other prohibited places like a courthouse or a police station, you know, I, yeah, I don't know. I mean, the question I've asked, and it's, it's comfortable, that can I climb up on my roof with an AR fifteen and start knocking off the squirrels that are eating my bird feet? And I don't know, I I don't know if that, if that's, if we can prohibit that.
Does this become problematic for us with our lottery hunts for our city-owned lands that we don't?
No, that's, no, that, that, that's, you know, we have the right to restrict.
Okay.
Um, who can hunt on the land, um, it's.
As the property owner?
Yeah, as the property owner, but the individuals who own their own property within the city and our ability to restrict them from engaging in activities on the property, uh, is probably curtailed by that, by this, by this statute.
I have a question for you. If we have to suspend our change of ordinance to suspend those, how much is that gonna cost us to change our ordinances? I know there's a cost, is there not, George?
Yeah, there's.
You're just paid for it.
Huh?
You're just paid for it, to, uh, for the drain, uh, two, two thousand, two thousand dollars a year that we, that's what we pay to change ordinances.
Right, but, I mean, this would be above and beyond what the normal ordinance.
No, we just changed ordinance.
Okay, I I just curious if there was an additional.
Well, you'll have, you'll have your advertising fee for any, any ordinance, we normally do that, but, um, then you'd asked earlier about, is there, will you just kind of suspend the ordinance? But there's not really, there's not a mechanism for that, I mean, that's kind of wrapped up into the prosecutorial discretion kind of that is, where things get prosecuted or not, and obviously, we're probably not gonna be prosecuting these heavily as, or, for some, you know, more guidance from the courts and things of that nature. But, yeah, you know, the, the question is, do you want to repeal now, and maybe this gets overturned, and run the risk of getting sued in the meantime? Or you want to keep it set, or you want it to be set, and run that risk back, you know? I don't have a feeling.
Is it possible to just, uh, amend our ordinance to say that our ordinance could be essentially overruled or, uh, subject to a higher authority in a high-ordained vice code in their right to bear arms language? And that just, in, in the event that someone says, well, we have a challenge, we wanna sue, we wanna pursue a civil suit, and then we just point to that clause and say, well, now, we already kind of acquiesce that if our ordinance violates the state, uh, revised code, we can just turn to that and, you know, essentially say that they can be cha, you can challenge it.
Yeah, and.
We will, you know, defer to a high-ordained vice code, I, I don't know if that's.
Yeah, and, and that's, and that's something you see with some other, other, other parts and other codes is, you know, each of those three sections I cited, you can really, you can amend them and preface all of them with, to the extent not otherwise concluded by Section nine point six eight of the high-ordained vice code.
That sounded a lot better, no, I said.
That wants to do a long debt to get there. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's one thing you can do, you can put that language in there, and then, you know, it may be certusssage down the road if nine point six eight gets overturned. Um, there was, I will say, at the legislative level, it was vetoed by the governor, and then, uh, it was overridden, you know, so, I mean, it was pretty popular in the state house.
Yeah, they don't like home rule. I mean, and that's what we, we're giving up, we're giving up more home rule, and, uh, that's what, it's supposed to be a home rule state where the individual communities set the standards for their communities and what they want to happen in their communities. Because we're very different than Cleveland, we're very different than Akron, we're very different than Galleon, which is a few miles away. So thi- this is just another trampling on our rights as a small city in a home rule. Okay.
Greg, have a question.
Question for Rob, um, let's say theoretically, somebody has enough land in the city limits that they can discharge a firearm and not be towards a house or across the road or something, and they decide they're gonna do this at three o'clock in the morning, and the gunshots are obviously violating the sound noise ordinance, is there any way the sound noise ordinance can be applied to that individual at that point?
Uh, the, the noise ordinance, um, could be applied, I mean, it's been challenged, um, the court didn't uphold our noise ordinance on the last noise ordinance case we had, uh, found it to be vague, uh, Mr. Myers is working on, on some of those things. It could be, uh, it depends on how we revisit that noise ordinance and what kind of language we put in there. Um, it could also still be challenged under this, that the noise ordinance is an unreasonable restriction of a constitutional right. And that's, that's kind of key in, in the language of, of that state statute that they reiterate over and over, that the, the right to bear arms is, is, is fundamental constitutional right, and that it cannot be infringed by, by these local ordinances. So I think it would be arguable that, you know, guns make noise, and you can't, you know, you can't prescribe my use of my firearm by your noise ordinance, I, I would argue that, but, um, yeah, you know, that's, that's a way that, you know, you can try.
Jim, you have a question?
If, uh, if you're not trying to prosecute somebody, how can you sue if you're not trying to report this on someone? What was I saying?
It's a, um, um, what do you call that, um, a chilling effect. Um, like, in a free, yeah, like in the free speech context, uh, the ordinance creates a chilling effect on, on your constitutional right.
It seems like it'd be a psychiatric, psychiatric violation if they shoot firearms and have. Now the room, or, if the guy's down there, he's running a risk of losing all this firearm. You shouldn't have one anyway, right?
No, you're allowed to possess a firearm.
Of course, you're trying to allow you to shoot it in the town, you're shooting it in the town.
No, well, we have a, we have a city ordinance that says you're not allowed to shoot it in town. Um, but that, that's what I'm saying, is this state law preempts that, and says that you can't restrict, we can't, as a city has laws that restrict that. There are things in the high-ordained vice code that limit where and how you can discharge a weapon, you can't shoot at a house or a car, you can't shoot across a street, you can't, there a cemetery. There are some, there are, there are some restrictions in there, but, you know, it's, it's, if you had a nine-acre piece of property with a shooting range on it.
It'd have to be so far away from the road, correct?
Uh, you can't shoot across a road.
But you can't, there's something else in there that says you can't, you can't spotlight near along the road.
Yeah, right.
You can't shoot from your vehicle.
Yeah, but that's, that's a hunting restriction, not a firearm restriction.
Yeah, 'cause I believe you are right about that, Jim, I think it's like a hunting restriction, you have to be like thirty feet from the roadway before you can fire a firearm.
And you can't such a deer stand up on top of them.
Right, right, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Bruce.
So does this new state law give us a time period that we have to come from there?
Nine months from the, uh, when it was enacted in March, which is coming up only in the year. So play it. I think, did you print the whole thing out of it? Yeah.
So what do you recommend, Rob?
Yeah.
Would it be coming out of your pocket or would it?
It is, um. From a legal standpoint, there is some cover, uh, because of the Cleveland and Columbus lawsuits that are pending, um, but not a lot, um, I expect probably after the first of the year, um, some group, uh, some state somewhere will, um, you know, but, you know, the, the ADA, the ADA litigation was, was serious, there was a group that, um, used Google Maps and looked for hotels that had ADA fight calls, and just put it on soon. Um, there'll be groups, you know, some of the record stuff that looks for cities that have these other books, and, you know, five, five suits.
For civil rights, buddy.
Yeah. Yeah, and, you know, go to the court, and we'll, we'll.
All right, I, I think we're on a table list until the next committee meeting, which is two weeks from today. Give us some time to investigate.
No, I did, I have the full app, the full version of it, Hospital two twenty-eight, I have the full version.
You can look it, you can pick it up off the internet anyway. Hospital what?
Hospital two two eight.
Two two eight?
Yeah. Forty days, good day.
All right, uh, there's no other discussion in committee, I'll adjourn at seven thirty-four. All ears, please.
Hey, I'm the public, I need a committee to order at seven thirty four PM. Mine reservoir invoices.
We will go to the service director.
Um, as we all know, what we've been going through with the fine reservoir, um, we, we have gotten some invoices from Branson. And we have paid some, but now we've got the additional invoice and, um, we're winding down and finishing up what the breach plan is gonna be, and they're still working on that. But I sat on an invoice for probably two, three weeks because I, I sort of didn't just, I disagreed with it. But after further discussion with PCI, the mayor and Rob, um, we can get this invoice paid and we're gonna need to allocate some money for that. We thought in the beginning it was supposed to come out of the general fund. But Joyce has found out through the state auditor that we can't pay out of storm water. So, um, right now, we have a balance of fifty-nine thousand and some change that we need to get in current.
And the reason we can pay out of storm water is because the pines is, uh, endpoint for draining, like out on Oak Drive and, and those other areas, they drain into the pines. So the pines is taking storm water. So when I discussed this with the state auditors, I said, yeah, we'll be taking storm water because of that, so.
I will add part B, as, as we were going through this process, law director reached out to, um, the attorney at ODNR and we requested some numerous engineers that we could get some additional quotes to finish doing the NEP and the off-laid and Riley for the inundation mapping and the survey and things like that. I think we mailed out like twelve or fifteen and we got one back. And I'm working on one other one right now, but I gotta call it back to set up a meeting. So we're looking, uh, and I did put them in touch with ODNR to make sure all the work they wanted done was apples to apples. So, um, it looks like we might go to the states and mine down the road and be working on the other two reservoirs.
Joyce, uh, we have that much in the storm water that we can use that?
It's in my list of appropriations.
So it's not gonna affect, uh, what we need the storm water for? As in our separation with the
No, we should be fine.
Okay.
Better there than the general fund.
Jeff, you mentioned that you had some disagreement with the invoice. I guess, what was the?
Well, it boiled down to the hourly wage. Um, and, uh, for this particular kind of work that people do, just like Barry France. I'd say half that bill was almost buried because he's an environmentalist. And, um, you know, you start hiring that kind of people, it's not cheap. So we were kind of put under the gun and we turned it over to Branson. You know, 'cause we had to get some answers rather quickly to please ODNR. But then we had further discussion with ODNR and they're like, you guys need to reach out and get some other quotes. So that's why we got them kind of just working on the pines right now and not anything else.
But you are gonna have to get someone else to finish out the other reservoirs?
Yeah, the survey and the invasion mapping and the additional work on the other reservoirs.
I think most of you should allocate the twenty-nine thousand for pines invoices.
And I was just gonna say, out of storm water?
Oh, out of storm water, okay.
Yeah, I would say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On to the various appropriations.
Oh, yeah. We got a bunch. I've been going through the latest trial balance and checking out, you know, all the lines to make sure that, that were covered. Most of our shortages are in personal services, which covers salaries, hospitalizations, uh, workers' comp, those are the three areas because we're gonna have to be able to write our PO to pay for workers' comp in December of this year, uh, just because they won't pay in December. So that's kind of a dumb whammy this year, but it won't happen after this. And we did get a sizable refund back that had gone back into these funds, uh, because of all the things that we've done and rebates and that kind of thing. So, so that was a good thing. But in the general fund, we need to appropriate in program one, security persons and property, $2,000 to materials and supplies. Now, in this case, a thousand dollars of this has come, uh, through donations, uh, to the community foundation for police explorers. So a thousand of this will go into the police explorer line. The other thousand is needed for, uh, vehicle maintenance down in the police department. They've had some, some repairs and figure they need a little more to get them through the end of the year. So that's what that was. But then in the fire department, we need fifteen thousand in personal services. Again, this is partially workers' comp, uh, and partially hospitalization. Program three, leisure time, this is where I was going to appropriate the money for the charging station. Do we wanna go ahead and do that just so it's done for now for whatever we determine we're gonna do? Or do you want to hold this? We're just a pass-through on this, no matter where it gets located.
And if it doesn't come in, it doesn't go out, right?
Right, exactly.
If it's, I don't see a problem with it. It's not coming out of our funds, it's
Right.
It's just a paper
So we have it ready to go when it's
Yeah.
I think the
So according to the paperwork she gave us, it was ninety-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars that we would be appropriating from unappropriated funds. In leisure time, I, I put it under parks and playgrounds, basically, 'cause it's going kind of in Picking Park. And, um, and that was a place where we already had capital outlay items and we can just add a line to that.
If it gets moved from that spot, will that, it would be moved from that one?
Possibly.
Possibly. Possibly. And then we'll just do a transfer. I guess we'll know in a few weeks. Uh, then in program seven, um, general government, under the law director who just keeps spending our money, we need, we need twenty thousand dollars in contractual services, uh, for legal fees. And then in engineering development, I saw we were a little short on salary for some reason and we need seven hundred dollars in personal services. And the safety forces levy and the police department, we need sixteen thousand dollars in personal services. Again, this is hospitalization and salary line and workers' comp. And here's the big one, street construction, maintenance and repair. I'm not sure if a lot of this, a big portion of it is hospitalization. Some of it may be our, uh, our guys go back and forth between departments and if they're working in the street department, they're getting paid from the street department. And it's, it's, plus we've had a lot of employees move from one department to another this year, which really skews numbers that you tried to figure out in the beginning of the year. But we need to put ninety-eight thousand dollars in the personal services. Hospitalization, really, I think it's, it's in the red right now. And so is salary. In fund two eighty-one, the twenty nineteen victims of crime act, under victim advocate, we need to appropriate seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and seventy-five cents. Uh, that was unappropriated money earlier in the year. We did not spend all of it. I have to cut a check back to the state to reimburse them for what we didn't spend. So I need this money put in there so there's money to pay them. Waterworks, under Waterworks administration, uh, we spent a little more on refunds this year than, than we anticipated. I think we're a dollar fifty in the hole on refunds right now. So I put five hundred dollars in to cover refunds the rest of the year. Sewers disposal and sewers and drains, uh, we're short the salary line there and I know those guys move around and do a lot of different things. We need fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars in personal services. And oh my, I didn't finish this. We also need, um, in seventy-nine twenty, debt service, which is object twenty-six, seven thousand dollars. The reason I'm putting this in is that we have been approved, this is for the group two sewers. There's gonna be a loan fee coming like we had before that we'll need to pay. And I don't have any money in that debt service, uh, right now. And there'll be a second one, I believe, for group three A. We don't have the approval on that one yet, but when it comes through, they'll send us a bill saying, well, we approved this and this is a loan fee. So I'm putting the money in for that. And then in storm water utility, uh, sixty thousand dollars in contractual services for the pine reservoir. Todd's gonna have a big caption. He wants to read it.
Any questions?
I'd just make a comment that I think, you know, since we postponed on the AEP charging station, that we'd better leave that out of the, uh, out of the equation until, until we move ahead on that. I would just leave it out until we decided on that, out of that committee, out of the other committee, so.
I don't wanna hold them up, but there needs to be a commitment or proof that we made the commitment. I mean, maybe that'll be in the resolution. I, I, that's up to you guys.
I'll make a motion to approve the various appropriations, less the AEP charging station line item. Well, second pick.
All in favor?
Aye.
I will recess the finding committee at seven forty-seven PM.
We'll call public lands, public at seven forty-seven. It's about the city tower, user freedom, and back in April, we discussed this. And, uh, I thought, have, have you, have you ever looked into any? Uh, no, Rob and I talked about it, but I haven't done anything with it at this point.
So all, all, we got, uh, I think Rob sent that through us about the, someone, I got it somewhere from my email about, uh, the five G coming in, will be coming through at some point. This guy was advertising all how he can use all this money for your parks and he didn't break into that email or is that just?
I don't know, it was back in the summer, I think. But they were saying, buddy, collect help with this five G. Well, do you remember that? I believe you do, yes. But there was a whole, you know
Yes, and there, there were, uh, there are groups that are, that are out there that, uh, do come in and do that for city. I mean, generally, they reach out to, uh, they reach out to people that could have use for it. And, uh, I mean, that's one of the ways we've got this typically tower back here right now is that we get, uh, that's on the lease, we get certain, uh, certain amount, many, what is it, about?
Eleven hundred and fifty dollars.
I was gonna say about twelve hundred a month that we get off of that one. And, uh, the, uh, with more of this coming up, uh, like you said, with the five G and everything else that, uh, may be worth looking into again, or looking into in moving forward with, we could ask the administration if they would do that for us.
I'm just, yeah, I haven't heard anything about it. Yeah, I, I just kinda wanted to bring it back up.
I know, I, isn't, isn't our agreement with them back here, if they put more items on this tower that the, the, I mean, if they allow other entities to come on the tower, that we get more rent? Isn't that, wasn't that part of the agreement with them?
I haven't looked at that agreement, what you knew two, three years ago.
Okay. You may wanna take a look at that, 'cause I thought there was something in there that said that had they, if they, other than, uh, it's a Verizon tower, but if they, uh, made it available to other, uh, people to use, that then our rate, our rent would increase with it. So if you'd look into that, investigate that.
Something in the contract, because it did go up a hundred and fifty dollars, something like that, last year.
Okay.
Well, that's fair enough.
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
I didn't know Yeah, that was something that's supposed to happen after so many years.
I think there's a percentage go ahead for it to go up every so long, but we'll get it back.
It's just that there's so, so few opportunities to pay money as it's any
We, we get solicitations from, yeah, we get solicitations from time to time from companies that, you know, wanna rig your towers, wanna manage your towers, wanna do all those sorts of things, so those are always out there.
That's all I have. Are you assessing? Yeah, at least, that's, uh, seven seventy-one.
Any public participation?
I asked for a motion to join the
Adorn!
I'll make your vote.
Aye. We have joined.